Welcome, everybody. Thank you, sorry, yes. Welcome, everybody. It's nice to see great crowds, great things happening tonight and such a very agenda and that tonight. So first off, we're going to start off with something a little bit different, something that we keep talking that we're going to do and we're going to recognize. So first off, tonight, this town is a great town of volunteers. We all know that. We have our different clubs that step up to the plate and do work all the time. But it's always that little bit more special when it's citizens that just go out on their own without being a member of a club. Just to either clean up whether clean up the community, clean up some waterways, clean up the town. And it's just been brought to our attention that a couple of these folks are with us tonight. And I would like to thank you for Jeff Alou for first bringing this forward. So thank you, Councillor Fountain, and thank you for Councillor Wong for getting some of the information that we needed. And what it is tonight is a certificate appreciation from the city of Thompson for dedication to community pride and our congratulations to them. And at this time, we have certificates for Hunter Koharski and Darcy Koharski. But I would also like Edward B. to come up because he has been part of the trio of them out being out there. So would you please come forwards? We can give you a certificate of appreciation. Councillor Fountain, would you like to come forward also, please, and present, Councillor Wong?
Slide in. If you're smaller than a week. Thank you so much for the wonderful service you do to the community. Appreciate it. Cleaning up the community is a small thing, but it's has a huge impact for a lot of people, especially in that area. We want to encourage people to keep doing this. So thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah. Thank you.
I'd like to give this to you and keep up the good work, okay? Good job.
Perfect. So this is a very family effort. I'd like to also say that Hunter's mom, Tasha, she has definitely been out with us when we've been cutting wood for the warm-up shelters and we've been cleaning up some of the trails and that. So Hunter sort of dual, he gets to go with mom and he gets to go with dad. So I think he's a double hard worker. Thank you. And here is definitely our up and coming. Thank you. And thank you. Appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thanks, Grace. Thank you.
Nice to start a meeting like that. Next, we're going to go on for public hearing. So we are now all board members of the planning district. It's everybody. Tammy is right, the old product of the board members. This is not city council. This is the board for the planning district. Online, we also have David Hasman. He is on Zoom here as part of the board. So thank you. So I'd like to call this meeting to order August 8th, August 22nd, 2022, and I just lost my phone app. Just after seven, seven was six. Thank you. We've got the supporting documentation for bylaw 46-2022 of the administration.
This is the bylaw 462022, Thompson Planning District Development Plan Amendment to redesignate the area from Yale Newman Policy Area to Pusico Policy Area. There's a public notice attached along with the development plan amendment. The appendices, a comment package, as well as a report from the community planner Brett Mack of Minasboro Relations. At this time, it's open for the public to come forward and make representations in favor or against. All you have to do is come to the desk, say your name if you're representing yourself or a group. And then if you're in favor of this, there's a sign up sheet there because we have to take down your name and address. Then you say if you're in favor against this and you can say why or why not. But normally, we start with those who are in favor. So at this time, you're working, we can call for any, any of those who are in favor of the development plan amendment.
I'm going to read this straight first. My name is Walter Westeska. I'm a resident at 71 Pickle Crescent. I'm in favor of this project for the multitude of benefits that we bring to the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward in favor of this project?
Good evening. My name is George Neepan. I reside at 60 Iron Bay in Thompson, and I too would like to speak in favor of the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak in favor of this part?
Hello, my name is Calvin Linkslake. I live in 12 Ashley, and I am in favor of this project.
Is there anybody else who'd like to come and speak in favor of this part?
Good evening. Betsy Kennedy, Warling First Nation. She I am in favor to support this project.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward in favor of this part?
My name is Jim Beery. I live at 120 Yale Avenue, and I support the project as well.
Anyone further that would like to come forward and speak or your name in favor of this part? Seeing no one coming forward or anybody that is opposed to this project, would like to come forward.
I'm not sure if I'm for opposed. I have a couple of questions. Is this voting on a development or is it voting on a name change here?
The changes to the development plan, so previously the land that was out there under the development plan was called Yale Newman. This would be renaming it to Pusico. And with that would be some of the policy developments that goes around the land parcels. I believe allow the majority of it is identical to the language previously there. It's really just changing the name of that. Then the next step would be if a developer wanted to come forward, propose a development under that name, they could then do so. But this is the first step of changing that land from the name Yale Newman to Pusico with pretty much all the same development plan information.
I have a question on the current name. It's Yale Newman Yale being the first place of higher education. I gotta ask, what's Newman? Is it a person? What is the name after?
Yep, the majority of the names in the area were names of previous INCO executives. We've had discussions with Valet about changing this name. Valet is in support of the name changes.
Okay, that's what I have for questions.
Just have to identify your port.
Okay, can I get you to sign the paper, Mr. Mattichuck? Complete your name. I'll ask again. Is there any opposed persons that would come forward? Thirdly, anybody in opposition of this presentation? Thank you very much. Seconded on the agenda for Thompson Funding. Oh, I'm sorry, we aren't doing adjournments as public hearing. May I call for adjournment? Board Member McMyrtle, Board Member Colburn, all in favor. I would also like to say we have regrets from Councillor Cruz this evening. Next, we'll call the meeting to order, or Thompson Funding District, August 22nd, 2022. Seven thirteen. I get an approval of the agenda. Call for Valentino, Deputy Mayor Lumber, all in favor. I would like to note again that we have David Hasman on Zoom and Councillor Cruz. Sorry, just a reminder that if everyone's still board members, okay? That we're all still board. First is 3.1. This Thompson Planning District Meeting Minutes. Resolution 2022004, moved by Deputy Mayor Lumber, second by Councillor Ellsberg. It resolved that the minutes of the Thompson Planning District Meeting held in Council Chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Monday, July 11th, 2022 be adopted as circulated and straightened. Any other comments? Just a reminder, we're board members, not officers. Call for the question, board members, all in favor. Going to bylaw, work part one is the second reading of bylaw 46-2022, Development Plan Amendment, the sequel policy area. Administration, or first of pardon. Resolution 2022005, moved by Councillor Valentino, second by Deputy Mayor Lumber. It resolved that bylaw 462022, being a bylaw that Thompson Planning District Board to amend the Thompson Planning District Development Plan by law number 42-2012, the appendix A, map to be amended to redesignate the Yale Newman Policy Area to the Pusico Policy Area, be given a second reading, restoration.
So as noted, the package that was there for the public hearing is also attached. All of the amendments are laid out properly. Everything has been circulated and we've had a public hearing this evening with a number of representations in favor. It's now the board's decision or time to have a discussion and then put this to a vote.
Thank you. David, did you have any comments, Hasman?
Well, I'll read the the package and everything, and I read Brett's comments from Minasboro Relations, and I totally agree with them. So that Manitoba supports this.
Board members, any comments, or Board Member Ellsberg?
Thank you, Board Member. First of all, I want to thank the delegation for coming forward. Certainly, all is good for good news, even if it's just a name change. And certainly, that's what we're voting on tonight, if I heard correctly. And the next step, I believe in this phase, will be once we identify a project or major or project this one day now. So thank you.
Board Member Wong?
Thank you, Chair. I don't nothing further to add, but any one question? When can we see it happen? Yeah, when can we see this happen?
I can go through the process. So the next step would be for us to get the option to purchase and develop the plans in place. That would then have to come to council as well, and we'd have to start on the zoning amendments. Because this is a development plan amendment, after second reading, tonight's vote, it does have to go to the minister for review. But we've been assured by the ministry that they will be moving on this file to keep things rolling.
Thank you.
Board Member Valentino?
Thank you, Board Member Smith. I'll be supporting this tonight also, and I would like to note to Walter and George. This is the first step in years of work, though. This has been a long time to get to this first step, just to get to the name change. So certainly, been a lot of back and forth, and I hope to continue the partnership and having this come forth with Thompson Planning District sooner than later in the in the future to get this going. So thank you.
Thank you. Other board members? Seeing none, I would just like to comment that this has definitely been a a process that we've identified over the last few years, and we've been working diligently. So I'm hoping from here on in, things go much quicker once you have the help of the public and everybody wants what's happening. So thank you, Jack, for your patience and for bringing this great project to them. With that, we'll call for the question, board members, all those in favor. That might, I'd like to call for adjournment. Councillor Valentino, Councillor Wong, all those in favor. Next stop is a public hearing as as part of council. Can these switch your name tags? You're in fact, we've commented here. So I've called this hearing for August the 27th, 2022, for variation order 1006-22 at 7:19 PM, transcription.
So the city of Thompson is in receipt of an application for a variance for 1.000 hemlock. The construction of a multi-year housing project, 12 units. There is two conditions for variance, motors and front yard setback from 4.5 meters to 965 millimeter, just 4 meter, and also reduced parking for the required 16 spaces, 17 spaces on site. The public notice, the memo from the building inspector applications only now, it all part of your headwinds and site plan, or all part of your briefing tonight, this was certainly, unfortunately, common period as per the planning act. We are in receipt of newest letters, which we were in receipt of recently, right now.
So again, this is public hearing. So we'll be receiving representation for support for this project first. So is there anyone wishing to speak?
Perhaps I should go through the letters and support first for the council. The first letter of support is from Gary Annett, Head of Medical Operations, Valet Canada. Valet Canada Limited is a long-term supporter of the Mommy Child Friendship Center and is aligned with their mission to promote and provide culturally sensitive programs and services in the community to empower and respect accountability, leadership. Valet would like to express its support for the construction of a apartment complex on 128 Hymal Crescent. I believe we'd be agreed as such at the downtown area of Thompson, developing this piece of land into affordable housing for elders. There's a need in the city. This location is a prime location for elders with its proximity to shopping, pharmacy, the Mommy Child Friendship Center, hostel, et cetera. The development of affordable housing is also included in the Canadian Community Safety and Well-Being Plan. The city of Thompson adopted by resolution 2021-108, which Valet supports. We encourage the city of Thompson to support the variation order, requesting a reduction of 16 parking spaces to three parking spaces in a commercial mixed-use zone, order for Mommy Child to proceed with the proposed plan to build this affordable housing project. And that's Gary Annett, Head of Medical Operations. The next letter, variation order, 1006-22. It is from Penny Byer, 24 St. Horn Drive. I support the variation order 1006-22. As you're aware, I'm a former councillor of the city of Thompson. I've also served on the board of Lines Matter 55. For transparency sake, though, that I'm still on the board of Mommy Child Friendship Center. My current professional role is coordinator for the Thompson Senior Community Resource Council. The first two positions I talked about, City Councillor in Lines Matter 55, introduced me to facets of construction housing, by law requirements and enforcement, which I never considered. Looking back on my time in these roles, I see where many opportunities were missed. So I share my learnings from these roles, my current role of the seniors, with the hope I can influence council in a way to avoid another missed opportunity. Prior to joining the TS, CRC, I estimated we had a couple hundred seniors at the most living in Thompson. That figure is actually more than 2,000, according to the census. Among those 2,000, you'll find seniors like me return to work or change careers. You'll find some are content to enjoy their home or cottage, some prepared well for their senior years to live quite comfortably, even with the recent inflation. Others have experienced the deteriorating health and related expenses. Some are struggling to be able to stay in their homes. Some have had to move to substandard apartments. Some are in personal care homes, it's kind of a bit isolated and depressed. Some struggle to pay the rent, the medications, groceries. Some have families who take care of them. Some have families who take advantage of and abuse them. In short, we have a huge segment of Thompsons who are in their senior years, and unfortunately, it's not all golden for them. Of all the challenges I just mentioned, the city can have a positive effect on only its few. They can take measures to make it easier for older people to live in their homes. And when they can no longer do so, the city can help ensure the quality housing to which they can move. So they said, I support the request for a variation order to bylaw 1891-2012. I realize as a councillor that I did not support the same request several years ago. We are not comparing apples to apples here, as the project proposed by Mommy Child has some significant improvements over the one made back then. And my current role as the coordinator of the chief SRC, I've come to witness firsthand the different living standards which older people in Thompson live. It is unfortunate that some people who have contributed to the community of upbringing of our children, grandchildren into our economy, face the reality of having their final years in poverty, substandard housing, and with very few supports. I asked the city to consider a positive response to the variation, the request for the variation order to alleviate some of the hardships faced by our senior population, and as I said earlier, take advantage of the opportunity. That's Penny Byer. This is a letter now from the Thompson Seniors Community Resource Council to our elected officials who mandated this to serve all residents of Thompson. We write the letter in support of Mommy Child's quest for variation to the city's bylaw 1891-2012. We support this request for several reasons. There's a critical shortage of suitable affordable housing for older persons in Thompson. This project will help to lessen the impact of that shortage, especially for those seniors and elderly with low incomes or mobility challenges. The zoning bylaw assumes that households all have ownership or have or access to at least one vehicle. That is not the case with more or more senior population. Since the bylaw does not take into effect all population demographics, variation for projects such as this one is a practical solution to help lessen the dire need. Further to parking space concerns, we understand there's additional parking available on the adjacent Mommy Child property. In addition, there are C K parking if we go in the former liquor store parking lot. Although the setback will be reduced, it will only help showcase a modern and attractive building in a very central part of our city. It'll make more convenient for residents to access the sidewalks. We trust the council will give serious consideration to allowing this variation. Tonight, it will be the same as depriving older people, Thompson, the right to housing, that housing that allows them to live with dignity, that is signed by Linda Dearman, Chairperson, Molly Stapleton, Vice Chairperson. The next letter is from Manitoba Families, employment and income assistance program manager Victoria Livingston in the Department of Families, Government of Manitoba. The employment and income assistance program with the government is Manitoba, as well as myself, Victoria Livingston, EIA Program Manager. Support the affordable housing project for elders developed in 120 Henlock. Considering the current housing crisis in Thompson and the lack of safe housing options for our community elders, the affordable housing project proposal brought forward by the Mommy Child Friendship Center is essential for our community. The location of this project is changing and meaningful to build a pullback to the project. Walking distance to grocery stores, restaurants, clothing stores, Queen Tribal Council, as well as other indigenous support services in the heart of the city. I understand there's concern about the number of parking spots available to residents of the housing project. As experienced through the lens of EIA programs, individuals who age out of the program often without finding out the resources or assets, including cars. They're often without support, which contributes to the loneliness and isolation. Considering this, a full parking lot would not be needed at this housing project for elders. Department of Families is in full support of the Mommy Child Friendship Center in their endeavor and recognizes our collaboration as essential in continuing to work to mutually support indigenous persons residing in Thompson. The next is a letter from Glenn Lakeoff, Executive Director of the Northern Manitoba Sector Council. My name is Glenn Lakeoff. I'm writing this letter to support Mommy Child Friendships Center's multi-complex apartment on the corner of Creed Road and Public Lane. This is an affordable housing project that is designed to exceed accessibility and energy efficiency standards. This will be an affordable housing complex with 12 one-bedroom units for elders. I was raised in Thompson, dispelled my spent my life in the north. As a northerner and living in Thompson, one of the biggest issues we have is affordable living for northern people and especially elders. This project will reduce this problem or problem. The next letter is from Giselle DeMune, F1-10 Yale Avenue to City Council. I am in support of variation 1006-22. I believe that the ship received for the benefit of this community. And the final letter I remember receipts of is from Murray Bennett, President of AV Builders. I'm writing this letter in support of Mommy Child Friendship Center's application for the variance of parking regarding the 12-unit affordable housing project for elders at 120 Henlock. I have worked with Mommy Child Friendship, while we talk over 20 years, and we have always been proud of the projects they have been continuing in our community. Mommy Child is an excellent choice for this project as they have demonstrated strong community-minded needs that minded needs that our community requires, and have always been the first to invest in areas that have become priorities for Thompson. For example, we have already invested in daycare spots that were low within the city, expanding the Mommy Child organization as a whole with the construction of four and also the construction of 19 Fox Bay location. They were the first ones to the table with the hostile services within our community. They've built low and compounding with their Fox Bay project, which is neat. Here we have a community-minded organization now wanting to invest within our downtown, the provincial organizations have left. The list can go on and on what they have achieved for our community and surrounding areas. As well, they have a high standard of maintaining what they have and invested in above standard upwards. All this takes time and commitment to find the funds and resources necessary. We, as AV builders and myself personally, have always been proud to work for them and to be by their side to support what is best for our community. And that is the letters I received.
It's part of my intention that another letter was sent to our inbox.
This is a letter from Oswald Saw, President of Men Are Part of the Solution. Men Are Part of the Solution, Max is writing this letter of support for the approval of variation 1006-22. I would like to commend the Mommy Child Friendship Center, MFC, for taking a leadership role in trying to address the many issues of affordable and supportive housing in the city of Thompson. The board of maps is in full support of MFC's plan to construct a 112 one-bedroom complex for elders. We are well aware that the availability of affordable supportive housing is a major barrier to community development in our city. The city of Thompson has identified housing as one of their 10 strategic goals under the 2019-2022 strategic plan. The city of Thompson also prioritized it under sustainable community plan, the need for providing a diversity of improved housing opportunities as one of its 11 key themes for sustainable vision. The work, the prior work at the Thompson Economic Development Working Group, TEDWAVE, also identified affordable housing as a key pillar of community development for the city. Maps have been involved in transitional and supportive housing for individuals since 2013. Based on our experience, our operation has come to appreciate various types of housing stock that is needed to address the different needs in our community. Based on our experience, our operation has come to appreciate various types of housing stock that is needed to address the different needs in our community. Housing to address elder population is definitely a high need in the area of affordable and or supportive housing. The twelve units that will be added to your operation as well as an ideal location to services. Is very much needed. We understand the variation number one zero zero six dash two two. Has intended to allow, intended to allow the reduction of parking from sixteen. Based on the standard amounts for the twelve individuals in the units and allows for visitor parking stalls to three. Based on our experience with our clients, that included some elders over the past nine years. We agree that most of your clients will not have their own vehicles and there will be limited visitation occurring. This will allow for three parking stalls to address the day to day operate parking needs of the complex. For example, over the nine years of operating our men's transitional housing. And more recently, our women's transitional housing. We've had five individuals who've had their own vehicles and no elders having their own vehicles. The variation is needed to address the gap between standard development requirements within the reality of the needs of this type of housing. And then just left his contact information for those.
Thank you. Further in the audience, is there anyone that would like to speak in support of this project?
Two second.
Not as long as Oswald's letter.
And your name?
Ms. Deish Boyer. Three twenty seven Jennifer. I'm the executive director of the Monwechak Friendship Centre. I guess for me, this is a little unique because I've done this already. So there's a few things. But I think that people should be aware. The Monwechak Friendship Centre works extremely hard. To meet the needs of the urban indigenous population in our community. We take great pride in what we have accomplished over the years. We renovated our hostel facility on one twenty two M lock. To include transitional housing units for those who are homeless, where are risk of becoming homeless. While still providing rooms and meals for medical clients. We have opened thirty six daycare spaces. Expanded our preschool to include an offsite location. Constructed a new friendship center facility. That is one of the largest in Canada. Fifteen years ago, Fox Bay Dens was constructed. To provide low income housing for post secondary indigenous students and their family. I can tell you that when the comment was made during the council meeting on July twenty fifth. That maybe we consider these to an area. It reminded me of how the idea of us building our two fourplexes. On Fox Bay, one facing Creed Road. It was also met with skepticism and not so supportive comments. It's been fifteen years and the units. Are still in immaculate condition and the most we have ever spent in a year has been four thousand dollars in repairs and maintenance. This is because we take great pride in our properties. And what we offer to this community. And we spend a great deal of time and energy in ensuring that they meet our extremely high standards. We also do monthly inspections of each and every one of our units. The ultimate objective of the Friendship Center's affordable housing project is to increase the volume of affordable housing units. This will help ease the critical shortage of quality of order of housing in Thompson. By offering a new and much needed housing development in the community. That will increase the availability of quality of boarding units for elders. Who otherwise would have to settle for substandard accommodations. When discussing our target population, it is clear that they are sometimes last in line. For the worst housing available. A key element of the housing project is to provide quality accommodations. Where people feel safe, comfortable and proud. For over forty years, we have provided elders with the support they need to live in our community. We've seen some of them live in isolation with no family. And are housed in deplorable conditions. I'll give you an example. We have one elder who was living in an apartment that was mold infested on every single wall. We only found out when the individual required a home visit. When we asked why they didn't let us know. We were told because they were afraid to get kicked out. And they wouldn't have nowhere to go. This does not go on, this does go on in our community, whether we want to believe it or not. And yet here I sit, trying to convince this mayor and council. That not having the required number of parking spots should not be a priority. In that the element of the support will happen. At the previous hearing in July, when I advised that many of our elders do not have the luxury of owning vehicles. That argument was then met with the number of visitors that would require parking. This has bothered me since then. As many of our elders don't have that luxury either. As many live in isolation. This complex is designed to help eliminate that need. As well by providing a common area and beautiful landscaping. That will allow them to socialize both in and out of the complex. This state of the art complex that will be fully landscaped and supersede all energy efficiency and accessibility standards. Will be a huge asset to this community and provide beautification to the Creed Road area. For two and a half years, we've been fighting for funding for this project. As you all know, it been turned down twice for rapid housing. And now that we have ninety five percent of the required funding secured as of Friday. It seems unfair. That if this mayor and council does not approve our variance application, the life of the project dies. I'd also like to add that although I know Thompson has its own bylaws. There are other municipal jurisdictions in Manitoba. That have zoning provisions that reduce parking requirements to one stall for every five suites. This would allow for parking spaces on site. However, with redrawing of the site plan. Not sure why it wasn't mentioned. We are now able to provide seven onsite parking spots. I also want to point out that. With the Monwechak Friendship Centre also owning one twenty two M lock. We have ten parking spaces where since our office relocation eleven years ago. The most parking we have required is two spots. One staff person during the day and one elder who has since moved out. We respect both. We respectfully provide this information for your consideration and acceptance of our application.
Does there, anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Please come forward.
So again, my name is Calvin Linkslake. I live at twelve Ash Street. I'm also the executive director for Manitoba Q eight Nally Ollie Magano. So I'm here tonight to address. The mayor and council or the board, which are when I'm speaking to right now. So I have a few points. One, the, the recommendation to move it to Eastwood. I don't know why Westwood or Burnwood or other. Community, other areas weren't mentioned. I don't know why Eastwood is targeted, but with that, I think that would create. Some problems. For this project, the one thing, they already own it, you know, that would put them in a hardship to have to find a new location. To find new land, to get it rezoned. So I don't feel that should be an appropriate solution. They already, they already own it. So why would we do that to them? I say we because I'm a, I'm a member of this community and. For, for second, as the Monwechak, they're doing an amazing job with meeting the needs of this community. And that needs to be recognized. Well, you know, people are always asking. Where's M K O? Where's the city? Where's? Well, here's Monwechak standing up and saying, we want to do something, we want to help. We want to provide a solution. They're part of the solution. We all need to be a first, part of the solution with them. With that as well, it makes, it makes a business, a good business sense, a good community decision. Seniors, they add vitality, they add stabilization to a community. A lot of times we have people, you know, here who maybe, who maybe didn't start out here. They leave, they go back home because you know, as you get older, that's what happens. You want to go back to, you want to go back to your family. Well, this is where they're from. So they're going to stay and they're going to add. You know, they're going to add to the community. They're going to, you know. That building is going to be there. It's going to generate taxes, revenue. You know, revenue to the businesses that surround them because this is where they're going to shop. They don't, a lot of them don't shop online. They're going to shop local. So it makes sense. As well. And started the parking. I've been in, I've been in discussions with Chief Moody. Right now, I don't know if you're aware, but they are in, in election mode right now. So he. He's not been available unfortunately, but he did, he did, he was very interested in having a discussion about the parking. However, I don't feel that that should be a, a reason to decide yea or nay on it. I think. You know, I think the decision needs to move forward without that solution right now. For one, for, for one big reason is that those people who are going to be living there. The reason why they're living there is because a lot of them don't have family. Some of them are sixty school survivors. Some of them are residential school survivors. Some of them. Have lost their children, you know, and. I don't know, you're probably aware, but unfortunately the death rate with our population is very high, you know, so you have. You know, it's not uncommon to hear people, I've lost all my children, all my children are gone. You know, so that's the reason why they're living there or they've given up their house so that their grandchildren have somewhere to live in the community. You know, they made that sacrifice because I want my children and my, and my grandchildren to have some place to live. So I will leave. And you know, and those are the kind of decisions that they make, you know, they, they want to be part of the solution as well. And, and then I think another reason why we need to move forward with this is reconciliation. I don't know how many organizations, huge organizations, small organizations, they ask me. Well, how, what can we do for reconciliation? You know, it. And I get it's a hard thing to understand, you know, even sometimes that, you know, I'm kind of like, well, what can we do? And we're going to have to meet on the, meet in the middle on things, you know, we're all going to have to come where we. Where we come from each of us and meets at some point when it comes to reconciliation and whether you recognize it or not. This decision is part of reconciliation. It's supporting an organization that wants to support others that don't, that, you know, that. Due to circumstances, don't have an appropriate place to live. So this is part of reconciliation. Doesn't cost you anything. You know, so this isn't, this isn't, this is an easy decision, I feel. You know, where we can kind of come together, meet midway and there's a lot, there's going to be times where it's not going to be easy on either side, you know. Either, you know, it's going to be hard reconciliation, you know, when you, when, when the word, it makes it sound like it's going to be. A lovely road, you know, down the foot. We're all going to skip down the road together and everything's going to be great, but. That's not the case. We're all going to have to, you know, work a little bit harder, meet each other in the middle. And decide how we're going to move forward together. So to me, this is one of those choices, you know, are you going to meet us? Hardway and, you know, and support and be a part of the solution? Or is this going to be, you know, something where a hu- huge opportunity is lost? Where if your decision is going to cause people not to have. A place to live because of some parking spots. That's what it really boils down to. So do you want to be part of the solution or not part of the solution? So for me, I would like to be part of the solution as a community member. Even your community members, we are looking to this, you know, to this board, to this council. To, to lead the way in reconciliation, you know, it starts with leadership and, you know. People are, are needing, you know, leaders to, to bring us to a spot where we can all join together because, you know. As reconciliation, it's something that's new. It's something that needs to happen. It's something, you know, and we need. Leaders that, who are not afraid to say, you know what, I don't know. How, you know, what reconciliation is or exactly what it's going to look like, but I'm willing to try. I'm willing to look at every decision I make and say. Is this going to benefit people or are they going to, you know, not benefit people? And then have the courage to make the decision to, you know, to do it. Even if it maybe is in, isn't in line with, you know, with variances or laws or. But be willing to, you know, to be that leader, to support these things because at the end of all your decisions, there's people. At the end of all of those decisions, whether it's yes or no. There's people where you're affecting people's lives and that's the thing you would always need to remember. So I hope. That the leaders that lead this city that I live in, that I'm part of. You know, has the courage to move forward and make the right decision. Thank you. But instead I am, I am in support of it. Just in case you didn't know.
Thank you, President. Thank you.
Hi, Kim Hicks, Y W C A Executive Director. And President of Thompson Housing Agency. I've been in front of council a few times to talk about hosting and obviously I'm in favor of this project. And as I've said for several years, we need to start addressing our housing issues in Thompson. And we need to have affordable options. I run a transition program at the Y, hundred and eighty people on that waitlist. Some of which are elders that are living in substandard places. Or overcrowding or don't have anywhere to be. So I'm extremely proud of Monwechak. With this project and how much work has gone into raising the funds to get this project off the ground. I have to say for sure, the Y has sixty rooms, twenty four of which are transitioned. And I think I have one client that has a vehicle. In my parking lot. So the parking, I think, is a non-issue in this housing project. So. I think that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Sign your name.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Have we got anyone else that we should just be compared to?
Good evening. My name is Greg Biddler, eighty one cent of R I D's. I am the president of the Monwechak Friendship Centre for the past sixteen years ever. And I just want to say that I am in. In support of this project as well. The Friendship Centre has provided a lot of capital projects in our community to help better the lives of many people. And we will continue to do so into the future. We know it's not going to come up within the next few years, but I know that we have a few more other projects on, on the go. So I am in favor of this, of this project and I just want. Because it just be repeating a lot of things. But I do really believe that, you know, this project will give our people, particularly our elders. Dignity of life. Okay, a lot of them are living and we have some of them in our fantasy, you know. How is it? You know, one room in the hall, they kind of thing. So this would provide them with an opportunity to have a better quality of life, given them a sleeping in their life. I mean, they spent their life riding for society, just have the all boots. And, you know. They worked hard, but I think having your own home. When you're in your eighties. Is very crucial and it's something that the city should really consider. Take a look at and support this as well. So yes, I am supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak and support this project?
Jim, you're in one twenty eight, you have your mind. Well, I think this is a good project. There was some elders that were, that was why. He died and apparently he lived there. Many, many years in a one room. One room in the by the U C A, I don't. See how. Didn't have any option. And if you had that opportunity to. So we don't have so many like what the Y is contemplating. I think that's really, I would have given him. A better quality of life than when he had his last dream when he died. He just died recently. If you had that opportunity to, that was better. His last days to be better, I think that this was the one he would have got. And parking vehicles, like, if that's the only issue.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any other one, but just speak in a picture of this?
Any other one, but just speak in a picture of this project? Second time, anyone else speaking favor? Final time, anyone speaking favor? Okay, we will now take anybody that wishes to object to this project. Anyone?
Ron Madichak, former counselor and. Resident of the area for twenty-seven years, I live on Ash. Uh, what we heard for the last half hour, we have nothing to do with what's posted on that property. And first of all, I'd like to ask, why is it not posted towards the residential side where I live? It's posted towards Free Road, uh, it's posted to the back by uh the, the public lane there. By MTS, but not for the actual neighborhood to read. What you heard for the last half hour was a bunch of people trying to pull at your heartstrings. It's all about parking and it's all about putting a property. Putting a building on a property that is too small, a parking problem. It's a no-brainer, I, I, I went there for a look today on my way here because. It'd be out of the way to go by there. Or not to go by there rather, to get here. And there's room for. Parking of two vehicles. The length of that building, public parking on the street, two. They wanna go from sixteen to three, add the two, it's still only five. It's. It's hugely. Uh, in the deficit for parking. It's not a good idea. I agree with a lot of what they say, yes, we do need. Uh, housing for certain people, for, for everybody, we need housing, affordable housing, but not there. We've seen it all over this town where Manitoba housing has put these buildings where they don't fit. Don't make the same mistake again.
Do sign the paper, please.
I did not, but I will.
Is there any other comments opposed to this project? Second time, any comments opposed to the project? In, there's a final. Uh, Anthony, I'm gonna reach out to you, it's council love to ask you to be terrified at this point.
Council normally asks their questions when it comes in the next meeting, if there are clarifying questions of the proposed council could ask those now. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just a quick question, um. With respect to parking, can I get clarified from the proponent, whether this is. For elderly housing? Or if it's for low-income housing, my understanding was this was for low-income housing.
Affordable house.
Or for, affordable housing, because that doesn't necessarily mean elderly alone. And in this day and age. Um, after hearing what I heard, I felt a little bit on the spot because. To think that someone who's um. Subchallenges with their wage or has, you know, needs low-income housing. There's never a vehicle, I don't think. That's correct. I think that there's many people can afford a vehicle or also have some issues paying rent or buying a home. Anyways, if I could just get clarified. Whether or not this is targeted for elderly, I don't think that would be a huge help.
Thank you.
So my understanding from my discussions with the proponent, they can correct me if I'm wrong, is that it is affordable housing, but it has been specifically built for elderly people. That's why there's the accessibility components that are put into it. So that's my understanding of how that was designed.
Yes. I just wanted to, and I know not everybody knows everything the project center does. But we do, and, and running the numbers program for. Forty-seven years. Right now, we are a lot of, and the elders are there, are elders with. That is our target, our target is our elders. And the elders that are in our chat.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, a little bit of confusion that would need clarification. Not that it makes one bit of difference to me one way or the other, but uh. In the first application, I heard again tonight, we're going from three to seven. Parking spots, if I read right. And maybe I'm not, but this is proposed changes, reduce parking from sixteen stalls. To seven on site, ten adjacent for. Adjacent law located at one twenty-two in law, that tells me we're talking with seven D, that's a dollar. That's what I'm reading. Now, I might be wrong. My half an hour behind, I'm from Newfoundland, so could be a problem. But let's be clear, is that correct what I'm reading or not?
Just go to our director, I believe the architect has worked on making changes.
Yeah, that's correct, it's current, starting by, which is part of your binder. From my list, it's up to seven spots. And then as per the comments raised earlier on, there are ten spots in the adjacent one country.
And just to follow up, if it's one point two five times twelve O D units. I believe now we've exceeded the limit that we really need. Is that correct?
It's one point five, so.
One point two five.
We wouldn't even six, right? And we're now, we're now plus, plus ten, seventy.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I also need the point clarification. First, I heard Dean said this is the, the grand, is that a photo from city or the separate apply, they apply the grant?
Yep, so there's multiple, proponent has multiple avenues of funding. So there is the city's funding, but the proponent has also worked with the federal government. Um, on separate funding that is kind of there, that would go straight to them, it wouldn't be through the city. So there is that portion that was to the city that was the Manitoba housing funding, but then the proponent is secured second funding on their own.
Okay, I also want to follow up, Madam Mayor. Regarding to the funding. I'm pretty sure this what I know, the funding is for affordable housing. Am I right or wrong?
The Manitoba housing grant is specifically for affordable housing.
So, yeah, a lot of them. Can we change the scope of the funding, which is from affordable housing, become elderly? Uh, affordable funding, because right now I've been hearing all night, it's about elderly. For, for them to have the face. But can we funding some sort of uh. Direct, not direction, mandate about the fundings can use for.
As long as the project meets the criteria for affordable housing, it's already qualified. Regardless of, if the proponent wants to target it.
The last question, please. I heard about transition. Is anything do with the transition with this funding?
I have to look to the.
Can we use it as a transition house?
It has to be built according to the requirements of the affordable housing. That's all laid out in the language for Manitoba housing, and whoever the other proponent's funders would be.
So the funding, the funding that we're accessing for the new apartment block. Is. From Manitoba housing by the city, Manitoba housing itself. And C H C. That's one of my needs. As well as my own one. Or the person. My transitional housing that I have is a one twenty-two in law. And that funding is provided by reaching home. Well, C H C is the largest. So is it specifically transitional?
Since she gets to speak, I assume I'm also allowed.
Oh, no, sorry.
Hey?
If council, it's council now having their discussion, if they want to address someone, then the subject council to address.
Sorry, sir.
The notice says three. It doesn't say.
Excuse me. Yeah. If you actually read the package today, I read that there was seven.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I see you were at the border, it is at a border, the member of the public cannot speak at this time, it's council opportunity. With no disrespect towards the, the audience.
Thank you. It is what we were reading, thank you. Colster McHurts.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, I, I just want to sure, ensure that I've understood the language correctly with respect to the elders, so it'll be. Preferred for elders, but not necessarily a condition to get a space, I guess, right, but what I've heard is there is more than enough. Elders, you kind of said in your transitional program, I respect. Suites would be, no, but it won't be. Condition. Right, like sometimes you see how in communities for fifty-five or so, but that wouldn't be tricky.
I have to defer that to the proponent.
Yeah. Uh, correct, we don't have that many elders that are trying to show off things, but you're in a program of education for one hundred and twenty more.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? How's the phone?
Yes, I'd said I've been thoughtful about this project for a while. After the last meeting, I voted against it, so. No, because not because of the park. Because it's against our Bible. Right? We're all here, hopefully, we're following all our Bible, we hope for that. Right, that's the problem with me, is the Bible. And it's not, we're about the houses or not, now, we gotta find a way. That our Bible all spits in this project. We've been working on, we went from three parking stalls to seven. Right, so we're working on, we're getting it, this is a good project. Still some problems gotta be worked out. One question I got, and this goes to Lyle, the. You, we got, Councilman, we said we got seventeen parking stalls in two places. Question I got. We need sixteen for the one. The new project, that's a Bible project. How many do we, Mama We Talk? Say they should have. They did one point two five.
One, one twenty-two in law?
Yes.
No, one twenty-two in law, sorry, I mean.
Yeah.
Uh, one twenty-two in law actually has existing variance on file, I don't have it with me, it's on my desk downstairs, it's actually. From the Bible at the time to reduce their number of stalls down to. Whatever it is they have now, I don't remember what it was, but when they did their evaluation, they needed more, there was a variance done approved for them to have refused parking a lot that's for that. So they got, they said, no, we got ten parking stalls. So I looked for a project. You know, it's a good thing. Good thing, good thing for us. We don't have a lot of these, they just. You know, we had much of a chance to talk about them. But I'm going to say, so I, I looked at project, we're not. I'm going to say, seven parking lots. The only concern I got is M law question. Parking on the street. Right, it's question, it's not stopping. But we're going to have parking on the street. If you don't have, you don't, you're welcome, you're welcome.
Yeah, just to remind, this is still the hearing, so right now you're asking clarifying questions. If there's no further clarifying question, the hearing should be closed. And then you have time to debate your decision in the regular meeting of council.
Uh, okay, I'm okay, it's.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and it is a clarifying question again. When I read the proposed changes. And it said. Ten at adjacent lot located one twenty-two in law. Maybe I shouldn't be assuming, well, assuming that took into account the two that is needed there. So that tells me, please, correct me if I'm wrong, there is at least minimum twelve spots at Mama We Talk today. Or else I would, you have ten available, and I heard uh from the Mama We Talk that there's only two required right now for them at the Mama We Talk. That correct?
Okay.
So we have ten parking spots. Only one are the stall right now, it's currently being reviewed. It's been nine in four. And that's why I'm.
Just to confirm the other spot you mentioned, was it wasn't that the, since that, yeah, that's the second spot.
So just this, so really, we got sixteen spots, you know, one that's required, you got nine plus seven, so this one. The proposed change is not quite correct. Okay, I'll give you that, I'd say it's sixteen spots, we require sixteen spots, but I'm reading wrong, someone didn't clarify it for me, but that's what I see.
That's essentially what's proponent just proposed. To meet the requirements.
Any other clarifying?
I like that, that's where, because we're talking ten spots among you. One is huge, now, but you know, I, if I ask, why were? Why, the, the, they kind of have a parking by law for Mama We Talk, one twenty-two in law, right? That one's got a certain number of spots there, now, the ones that is needed there. Right, one that the Bible talks that needs them there. And the other one that's all for sixteen. Now, okay, so, how many do you got the Mama We Talk require, they got ten. How many of them do Bible say that they require to run that business?
Can I answer, so it's ten, they're already very for ten.
So they got ten very.
But they're using one spot. So the other spots, what they're saying are available for use by the adjacent property.
Okay. So actually, I would. We got eight, we used seven, we got seven and ten. Oh, see, I want to be in use, we stand.
That's correct.
For two spots.
First, she does, but uh. Just a question, there's gonna be a few looks. Here, you've got ninety-five percent of your funding, your design is done. We're waiting for this to get going. Parking spot, twelve individual units. And there's a hundred and twenty elders on this. I'm sure there's a question, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, thank you, I will save my comments for later, but uh, good comments, this will be moved. Kind of call for adjournment. Pastor Valentino, Dr. Mary Lamarc, all favor. Then I'll act. Eight oh nine P M, we're gonna follow the meeting council to order. For August the twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. I would like to recognize that we're on a technical time, the next one's fifteen A C. And the whole line of filmmaking, and that we are all three. Thank you, the total of the agenda. Colster Alfred. Colster McHurts, all favor. Community comments and feedback. Yes.
At the last meeting, there was a number of questions from the community member regarding specific checks. Um, the checks are listed on the agenda for this evening, as well as the responses with the details and what each one of those checks are for. So one of the checks was for. It's not opening. Uh, was for boss auto, I believe it was for transit bus safeties and associated work. One was for amazon.com, that is work related to the rec room that recently opened at the rec center this week or last week. And then the final check was for stat tech, which is with respect to the pool design energy.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for covering that, any more community comments, feedback?
Ron Madichak, twenty-odd street, okay, I wanna make reference to a sign that is put up in my neighborhood. About variation, and that sign states, three from sixteen. I would like this council to keep that in mind, that's what you were voting on, what was posted, if you guys wanna make changes and repost for fourteen days and be legal, that's fine, you did it once already, you might as well go it again. But. Don't get sucked into these numbers that are thrown at you, it's not now seven, it was three, blah, blah, blah. Did they change the drawings? Do they? Make a part of the, that lot of Mama We Talks? Belong to this building, okay, then you get out sixteen. Not, not a longer, because that's what it would have boiled down to, but I'm gonna move on from that. Okay, I might do it specifically, the one check number zero zero three four seven oh nine that I questioned. Okay, I like doing specifically, the one check number zero, zero, three, four, seven, oh nine that I questioned. I'd like an itemized, what exactly? Was spent there, for what? Last thing, six point three on the, uh. Agenda is a contribution agreement. No information there at all for us to know what it's about, I assume it's about federal provincial money. It could be about the, uh, the fundraising group here locally, it doesn't say. But anyways, I'm gonna back up now. Last fall. I believe it was around September, there was gonna be a public meeting on this whole thing. It's, it was decided at that time, that night, here in the chamber. That it will be held by the end of first quarter twenty twenty two. We are now looking at the third quarter twenty twenty two and still nothing. We are moving ahead with everything but the public. We are getting left behind, we don't have any more standing committees where stuff can be brought up. You people have shut down the public is what's going on. I'd like to see a meeting that was promised, thank you.
Any other handy comments or feedback?
This freedom was strong. I am all about children's safety. These party lots, are they gonna be accessible to grandchildren and grandparents? Because the others do not. And I would be very concerned if one child should get injured. Because of a parking issue. I would like to know if there's anything in the bylaws that would prevent that.
Comments shouldn't be taken anymore in regards to variation order, people have their chance to speak at the lot, but the public hearing. Should be closed, thank you.
She's Chinese, correct, that's a requirement of the planning act. Has to stay within that, um, hearing.
Saying no comment, more comments, maybe feedback. Move on to number six, adoption minutes. Five point one is public hearing, additional use of zero one dash two two, July twenty fifty thousand. Resolution two zero two two, one five one, moved by council, also second by council, over. Very resolved the minutes of the public hearing for variation order number zero zero one. Josh twenty two Jasper Drive, held in public chamber, city hall, talks mental, on Monday, July fifth, be adopted, assertive. Administration.
I'll just note that there's an error, a friendly amendment, I think we could do. So, uh, the title says public here for traditional use, but the language of the resolution said variation order, so we will make that change.
Any other comments? Over the question, all those in favor. By appointment, public hearing for variation order number one zero zero four dash two two, July twenty seven, two thousand twenty two. Resolution number two zero two two, one five two, who by council, also sent by council, over. Very bold result that the minutes of public hearing for variation order number one zero zero four dash twenty two. One twenty eight hemlock, present of the council chamber, city hall, Thompson and Hoba, on Monday, July twenty third, twenty twenty two, be adopted, assertive. Anyone else, comments? All those in favor? Five point three is adoption ministry, public hearing for variation order number one zero zero five dash two two, July twenty five, two thousand twenty two. Resolution two zero two two, one five three, moved by council, also second by. Council program. Yet resolved that the minutes for the public hearing for variation order number one zero zero five dash two two. Two twenty six, this pretty April, the council chamber, city hall, Thompson, over. On Monday, July twenty fifth, two thousand twenty two, be adopted, circuit, ministry. Any other council? Of the question, all those in favor?
Hi, I was just looking back on my minutes, and there it is a mistake, it is per conditional use. But the body of the, the resolution itself, it should read, so if you go back to number five point one. It should read the minutes of the public hearing for conditional use number zero zero one, uh, twenty twenty two. It shouldn't say variation, it should say condition.
Everybody is fine. Five point four, it's regular meeting with. No, it's for regular meeting with council, July twenty fifteen thousand. Resolution two zero two two, one five four, moved by concert. Uh, over, second by council, also, be resolved that the mission of regular meeting, council, health, council chamber, city hall. Talks mental on Monday, July twenty fifth, two thousand twenty two, be adopted. Administration. Of the question, any other? Of the question, all those in favor? Five point five is adoption of minutes. For committee of the whole, on the second, two thousand twenty two. Resolution two zero two two, one five five, moved by deputy mayor, and sent by second by council, over. Here resolved that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held in council chamber, city hall, Tom Smith, over. On Monday, August second, two thousand twenty two, be adopted as circuit. Any other comments from council? Seeing that, all for the question, all those in favor? Five point six is adoption minutes for committee of the whole, August fifteenth, two thousand twenty two. Resolution two zero two two, one five six, moved by counselor, Ellsworth, second by counselor, walk. Here resolved that the minutes of the mini, of the committee of the whole meeting of council, health, council chamber, city hall, Thompson, and over. On Monday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty two, be adopted, assertive, administration. Have a comments, ask great, hope the question. All those in favor? We are now going to go into resolutions. Six point one. Is a resolution approved variation order number one zero zero six dash two two, one twenty eight, hemlock recipe. Resolution number two zero zero, two zero, two two, one five seven, moved by. Counselor Valentino, seconded by deputy mayor, and whereas the city of Thompson is in receipt of a variation order application number. One zero zero six dash two two dash one twenty eight hemlock, present, lot one, block three, plan seven four. Three P L K O, North Division for the following. Construction of a multi-unit housing project, twelve units, built within a yard setback. From four point five meters, fifteen feet to nine sixty five millimeters, three feet, two inches. And reduce parking from required sixteen spaces to seven spaces on site in a commercial mixed use. Zone, C M U. And whereas, under the provisions of the planning act, a public hearing has been held to hear representations of. For and or against variation order. Now therefore, be it resolved that council approved variation order number one zero zero six dash two two, dash one twenty eight, administration.
Yes, so as noted in, uh, the resolution. Councils had a public hearing as a partner in the planning act, uh, this evening, there's been lengthy discussions, so presentations for and against the project. Uh, this is now council's ability, uh, time to have a discussion amongst themselves on their positions. And then to take a vote on whether this should be for, and whether it is the.
Thank you. Home through Valentino, a smover.
Uh, thank you guys, um, I think this is a great project, I supported it in July, I supported this, I think it was seven years ago, and it first came when I was. My first term of council back then. I think that tonight with the collaboration, these positive letters that were read in the, in the positive. Um, people speaking for it shows, that's a great thing, I mean, it's a great thing that. We need this in our city, and we get that kind of support from within our community to support this. And I believe that as leaders, we identify a need, we saw support for it, we've gone back and forth. To get everybody's answers and what they want, so as a leader, absolutely, I see this as a need in our city, and I have no problem supporting this a hundred percent. I appreciate the comments about reconciliation, and I think as leaders, we need to step up and take a role in that, you always have our books here at our seats. Um, I don't know if we open them enough, so thank you for the comments on that, it's a good reminder to us as leaders in this community. That we do need to be the ones to show that we're trying, and that we, we are a part of the city of Thompson. And we hear about the issues, and we hear about the need, to the point that this council put this as a need in our strategic plan. So not only did we identify it at the council, now we have a solution for it, so of course, as a leader, I'm gonna support it. And I thank opponent for always being so, um. Uh, her pride and her professionalism, when we asked questions and had to get questions and answers back and forth, I certainly appreciate that. And for, for Kim and Pommett, say about years telling us that we need affordable housing in this community, absolutely. We've been hearing it for years and years before I was on council eight years ago, so this is a, a solution to me that I look forward to, that we need in our community. And, and I think that, for me, no cost to us, I think that. Um, our community safety plan, that we as a council, that our city, we needed that. That we need to act on those actions that are identified in there, and this is just another one of the pillars that we'll be marking off. So I have no doubt that this project is something at the benefit, and for me, it's not about the parking. All of the answers that I've ever needed have been, been, uh, satisfied for me, so I have no problem, and I look forward to being a leader in supporting this at the goal, thank you.
First of all, I'd like to clear up, um, position. I'm always support the project. The only problem I have is a location and the space. And I'd like to clarify another, uh, comment I made last meeting about random, uh, Eastwood area. The reason I made that comment, I think somehow, there's a, some of the words taken out with caution, I did not. Encourage you to do that, just talking about, there's a lot of land at that area. But I don't think a lot of land, Westwood or other areas, so that's why I suggest, it's for the room purpose, there's nothing about others. I'm so, I'm, I'm solely focused on each. So now, go back to the question. I understand, I see, I hear the back and forth about the letter support and all that. So so far, I still confused about some of the things about the funding. To me, I understood to have this project moving forward because of the funding that we got from federal. One point one some million dollars, so we flow through so that it can be, come, complete the, uh, the affordable housing. So now it's become elderly affordable housing transition, how so many other different. Uh, proposal now, so I just, I still confused, and one thing I also know for sure. The city been trying to clean up a lot of bad decisions throughout the year of what we're trying to do. And some has become permanent damage, we cannot go back. So I try to do a right thing. That's why I look at this. We can change the bylaw if you don't think that's right, but I think there's a reason to have the requirement. For each block, there will be five, one or two, five parking spot. There's a reason, otherwise. They will not put that in place, and it takes some time to drive around Thompson, to look at all this affordable housing. You have the, uh, Cambridge, you have Fox Bay, you have Arctic Drive. And a few other places, and when I drive around, they're all full of vehicles, so. Again, I want to, I don't want to change the subject, I believe, this is for affordable housing. But somehow we come elderly, I don't know how, and I don't have that clarification until today, in front of me. So, also talk to Jason property. This will happen so often, because of one twenty two handoff, don't have enough space. The setback is problematic for the city to offer sometime, when there's a snowstorm. They need to pay to put some snow, so for a long, long time, one twenty two handoff, putting the snow across the street. Which is, I've been clarified with the administration, that piece of land, is it common, uh, a public land or? But it's verified that it belongs to fast gas, so now, looking forward. I would have a problem with the space, I'm not talking about the project, so I don't like change around. The, the location is saturated. And also, I'll talk about. I don't want to see the elderly being sitting alone at home, that when there's a visitor coming, let's say there's a big event. Uh, Christmas time or anything like that, there must be have some family to come and visit, what if everybody show up at the same time? You have five, five, five family or six family that show up at the same time, you have twenty vehicle there. How we gonna accommodate that issue? So those are the things I have the problem about it. Again, I would hundred percent support the project, no doubt about it, we need all this housing to help our people. And. Don't forget, I'm an immigrant. When I first came to this ca, uh, country, I had people told me to go back to where you from, and you change, they use the word. So I understand all this, totally understand hundred percent. So anyway, I want to focus on the issue, the issue is that land is not enough to accommodate twelve unit. I would like to see a downside instead of twelve, maybe go up to six, or maximum to eight, but twelve, I think is too exaggerated. That is why I was against it the last time, actually, I didn't even vote, I asked for tableing, anyway, thank you, Madam Mia.
When I first started, uh. This road on the being counselor, uh, I read the Ted wing documents, some of the other things that. And, uh, through the community safety strategy, and a lot of other things that we've had in presentations today. Our need for affordable housing. I'm not gonna be. Holding something out like this, that is so important, and. There's been so much work done, designing done, the money is there. Talking about some parking space, then there's. Other places in the city that are affordable housing, parking lots, they have room for twenty lots, twenty spots. And you'd be lucky if you find two or three vehicles there, even at Christmas. Now. There's times at Christmas time, when I have everybody show up at my house, and you know, figure out on the deal of. Back to take the snowball, do some things that we're not supposed to do, I'll do it. Anyway, it's a, it's a great project, I'm, I am sad, there's not enough space. At least there was more space, but we don't have anything downtown that would be accessible. For elderly people to be able to just pop across the road to where grocery stores. There's not that many grocery stores in all our residential areas, so it's a better spot for them to be able to. Move or to take a cab or to take a bus, whatever they need to, to the most location, get what they need. I'll be in support of this, thank you for your work. I'll be in support of this. Thank you for your work.
I'd be remiss to not support this project. I certainly agree with the need for. Affordable housing, whether it's for seniors or otherwise, absolutely. I think we would have avoided a bit of confusion by if the plan was to go with seniors from the start that to have that. Clearly they know. We would really have. As certainly I would have a question. Realistically, with the other additional parking spots on offer, really, it's not much to argue there on my side. I don't know if those. Parking spots are serviced for winter with plugins and whatnot. I don't know that that happens. The only thing I would ask is that maybe not my place to say this, but just to some. Because I do care about who ends up living there and I want them to have a fair. A good experience. I believe that it's important that it provides an open and transparent decision making process. As to how those limited parking spaces near the building get assigned. The council has no role in that whatsoever as far as I'm concerned, but it would be good for the people living there to know. Precisely, you know, who gets if there is priority for parking spaces such as people that have mobility issues or whatnot. Shouldn't get past five or seven. Spots, vehicles at that location. It would be good. Otherwise, I'd support it. You want to see it and wish them the best of luck with the project.
Thank you. Anyone?
Yeah, I'll come back to it again. It's not parking on the gates. Our bylaws for certain. That's the reason why I object to. Now, I think what we should be thinking in the future is just why not? Going to change over by laws. You know, the project comes up, there's not enough space there. You know, it was me. I bet you I get turned down. I did get turned down. Fifteen years ago. Well, they can live without counseling when I was in Northern Oregon. I wanted to expand. But I couldn't come up with enough parking. I had moved across crosswalk to get parking, which could have gotten land, but the city would not move across. But I didn't want the lane going through my parking. So it grabs part of the budget. So it's not. Is our bylaws states for certain things. I know this is a change to me at the beginning. It's too big of a change from sixteen to three. Too big of a change. But I can I can live with seven. But I'm waiting to see what will turn out there. I will go around long to see it, but I will be supporting this project.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thanks for delegates for coming out and attending tonight and speaking on this this project that they're obviously. Originally, when we talked about it, I was a bit skeptical about the parking issue, but I supported it then. And with the idea that allow the project to proceed and made possible some improvements to the design, which. I think went from the three proposed spots to seven now. That that is significant improvement there. And in addition to that, with more information, we proceed tonight. The ten spots at one twenty two hemlock. Only one of which is occupied during the day. Brings this up to their complement of sixteen. So that pretty much removes that parking. Consideration that I had and. With respect to affordable housing, especially for the elderly access test, that's critical. So. That one concern being removed, I will certainly support it tonight and wish you good luck in that project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's interesting to sit here as a counselor and talk about bylaws and variations. These are variations all the time. Where someone wants to extend their branch, wants to extend this, wants to extend that. If we're going to say. Let's follow the bylaw. I think there's a lot of things that Thompson needs to shut down tonight because it's a lot of it that's not. I'm a man of very few words like Kelvin, but let me tell you something. Someone mentioned about pulling on your strings. I listened very carefully and yes, my art strings got old. My mother came to live with me. Mr. Matt Chuck, you can shake your head and be angry if you want. My mother came to live with me after my father died tragically in Newfoundland. And I kept it for twenty years. You know why? Because she could not afford to live on her own and she certainly couldn't afford rent in Thompson. So if you want to talk about art strings for me, it absolutely is. Secondly. If we spend as much time in this chamber, Tom, in our crime in our city as we have done tonight, boy, what a city we would have. And a cleanup we would have take place. It's been over an hour. I told my wife it'd be over eight, by the way, I guess I lied again. One of the questions that was raised at the last meeting, whether it was a real concern of council or not. Was parking spots. And as councilman Myrtle and others have spoken to, I later by the number of times, so I was sure. Slow learner. We went from three to seven. In fact. We went to the sixteen requirement to be adjacent property, which I heard clearly and I've known V. Shabir for quite a few years now. Don't think she would give us misinformation. It required one spot for the person that works that bad building today. She have nine big. I want grandchildren. I want people to visit. It's important for the older folk to have visitors. My mother loved visitors. And I visit her frequently when she was the home in Nelson else. I want to challenge our council tonight. You all have an opportunity to make things right. If we're going to go against bylaws, we're going to go against every variation. We do want that to be part. Absolutely. But when I hear of over a hundred people on a list. Looking for affordable housing and we sit here and debate and debate. There's an issue for me. My question was answered with parking earlier. I'm satisfied. And I'll tell you when I'll say this in closing. Madam Mayor, every resolution that comes across this floor, I don't care really of deputy mayor votes or or councilor Myrtle. I'm accountable for me as a counselor to the public. And I will stand by my decision. And I take great offense when we allow people in the public to smirk and laugh. If I was in that chair, that would not happen in this chamber. I can guarantee you that. This is respectful. Reconciliation is respectful. And yet we think it's a joke at times in this chamber. And I'm offended, Madam Mayor, that we would allow that to take place there. In closing, I will support it. I wish that there was sixteen parking spots at one twenty two in lock, but I believe I've been satisfied. With knowing that while we look after, thank you. And I wish you all the best of luck in the project.
Thank you. And as everybody is having a chance to speak, I will also speak. My one of my big concerns and as it was yours both. Was the parking. To me, I am very satisfied that we have made a thing. And it wasn't just the parking. It was the fact of. The community comes to us and shows us as leadership. The parking may have seemed like a very minute thing, but when people start calling us and questioning us, we have to look at the whole picture. I myself lived in affordable housing. For three years with my four children at thirty eight grand in present. And if I wouldn't have been able to live there, I'm telling you. I couldn't have afforded to eat or I would have had to go on income security. I wouldn't have been able to pay. With four children and three bedroom apartment, a hundred and sixty eight dollars a month. This is what this is about, is what people can afford. And yes, I'm we are targeting possibly seniors on this round. That just means we got to work harder and get more affordable housing into Thompson for the rest of the people that need it. But this is definitely a start. The housing part was never the issue. Who's listening to the folks now? Also, before the with the last meeting. We all knew we wanted, we knew we needed the house. But we did not have that community support. It took that glitch in this for the public come out and stand behind everybody. And realize it wasn't just the party, that it was a whole need. It was part of reconciliation. It was part of our bounds. It was part of the norm. So thank you. Definitely, when we both ten years down the line and if something happens and somebody says what? We can say the community came out and supported this. And we can say Disha Boyer gave her job again as she does. And I'm some hero. So I definitely too, I am satisfied. Like I said, I would make the statement that I wasn't happy with the parking. And that was part of a whole, all not just about the parking. I definitely was always in favor of the housing and that. And I thank you for being able to fulfill that and fulfill the need for our community. So with that being said, I'd like to call for the question. All those in favor. Counselor Wong.
And Mayor, can I request one of those please?
A recorded vote? I guess we may have a recorded vote. I asked requested by Counselor Wong. This will be a recorded vote. All those in favor? I got Counselor Fountain, Counselor Valentino, Mayor Smooth, Deputy Mayor Lumber. Counselor Elder, Counselor McMyrtle, Counselor Culver opposed. I've counsel on. It's Carrie. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Lumber. Can I ask you to take the chair as the next president of the House?
Hey, I have to take the chair for Mayor Smooth for a moment. There's six point two. We were a nation under twenty twenty two, one fifty eight. Whereas the city of Thompson has been advised the proposed subdivision application to subdivide. Park lot. At one, one, two, nine, two, one, zero. An unserved fifteen seventy equal three. Now the fourth year result that council buys. Municipal relations, community and regional planning branch, subject to the condition provided by municipal relations, community. And regional time branch. That amendment to make boarding and lodging a conditionally loose within the UH urban walls of. The city of Thompson zoning by law number twenty nine one dash two zero one two. As amended, will be required prior to final approval. And in definition, boarding and lodging must also be included for the city of Thompson. Zoning by law definition section within the amendment.
Yeah, so Mayor Council has received an application letter. It was provided to us by the district planner Brett Mac. Mister Mac is circulating this to government agencies. When those you know, no opposed parties for this. I guess the thing the single lot, the single property that is that one site. Part of lot one five two nine two one zero and basically carve out the two acre. Lot within basically it's a just a little approval of subdivision. And one wide to two. It's the current area is urban pole. The proposed use for the two acre lot is boarding law. So that's a traditional use.
Sure, a few comments on this. So I find it's very interesting that this has come forward because this is. Clearly stemming from some of the changes conventionally. That we so desperately lobbying for in the city of Thompson is one of the lead on a resolution to AMM to create bill thirty seven. It's forty eight now, it's bill thirty seven. So really, it takes the control of our hands. When the community planner recommends the approval of this, that the application is satisfied. If we vote against this, it doesn't really matter. Can they will be appealed process through the municipal board? So this is something that we've been lobbying for since this went into effect last year that. This is exactly what we said would start to happen. It takes the control and the power out of. Use the pounds by now. If we don't approve this, when there's been a recommendation that. All everything's satisfied, that they can just appeal it and then use control in general planning. So. I see with the recommendation, the approval of subdivision from Brett Mac and community planner. That I'll be supporting this process at this depth of the way until the development plan come back. And then at that time. I would have the ability to question or that I will against it. So I'll support this as in this part of the process.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I did request for some document review. Let me tell, give a little bit of historical about this, this application before that. This is a unique situation. Because back in the day, when this piece of land is owned by the city. And also run by the city as a camp. For some reason, somehow the city. Cannot able to continue to manage their property. So somehow NCS. Holding managed to get that permission to manage the campground. And later on, they managed to purchase the land as well. So to me. And I believe the amount, I I'm not sure the amount because I don't see the document. I try to ask for the document from the city to provide. And to me, this has this kind of a unique situation in this piece of land. For me to understand, to move forward. I need to review. Maybe there's a condition attached. There might be some variance and other amendment attached because in that property, according to the zoning. Is supposed to be called urban hall. There's a lot of thing in there. It's not allowed to do under urban hall bylaw or planning district. So I don't want to say. Year or May until I see the document. Maybe there is an amendment in there. I just want to clear the doubt in my mind. So I request. For the document, I still haven't received yet. So I would suggest. For tabling tonight for this particular resolution. For the further until we get the document to review. Because again, probably is a good project. I don't like to stop it right here until we get further information. So Deputy Mayor, I will request for tabling. I'm moving.
Yeah, so the only thing that you can consider tonight is the subdivision application. That's the only thing that's in front of council. Other questions are to come back. That can come back at the plan of zoning or conditional uses. That's what that would discuss. I'm looking at the way the planning act is set up. Your council will table it. It'll be just like what happened with the previous variances. You don't either have to come back to council again, or the proponent can take it straight to the municipal or municipal. So the only thing you have can consider tonight is what is put forward as a part of the subdivision. Now, there's other questions that come at the next stages because this will come back to council multiple times. When it gets to that stage to talk about uses, then you'd have your ability to discuss the uses and if any variations and all that. Right now, the only question in front of council is can you take a piece of land and split it? It's the only thing that's in front of. That's exactly what I want to start right now. They're just asking some device. You're not even discussing what the uses. So I don't know what document you're wanting to table this for. Right now, it's just.
I'm I'm request, I'm moving the the tabling. Do I get a second? And then vote on it, then we move on.
Yeah, okay. We'll have to do that. They have shorthands for the tablet. Yeah, I'm going to have to talk to the province as I don't believe it can be tabled, but we'll talk to the province on the next steps and the proponents options under the funding.
Yeah, just just to be very clear, it's not in opposition to this. It's the fact that when counselors request information where we think it's applicable or not, it's on the subject. And it should be given to them so they make an informed decision. And what I understand is that was not done. That's the inappropriate, in my opinion, of that decision.
That's the inappropriate, in my opinion, of that decision. So again, it's got nothing to do with the project. Thank you.
If I can comment as well, I share the same concerns of council observer as. Actually running, doing a similar thing to this, and so I wouldn't dare not support this project. However, I do is feel it's important to establish whether or not you're even allowed to subdivide that property here. Well, it's impossible, there's an agreement that prevents that in place already. I would council along requested that document or find out if there was a document in place who wasn't provided. I think it's important that if it does, that it should be provided. So similar to council, I was my willingness to table this with respect to information. Thank you.
Councils table the matter, so you should move on.
Thank you, sir. Next, we're going to six point three, it's a resolution. Authorized administration to enter into contribution agreement for the construction of more wanted facility. This mission two zero two two one five nine, moved by councillor Valentino, seconded by councillor Colver. Whereas man, Canada and Manitoba have entered into the inter integrated by agro agreement. For the investing in Canada infrastructure program to support sustainable intensive communities. While driving economic growth. And whereas the city of Thompson has applied for financial assistance under the program to carry out the project. Now therefore be it resolved, the council authorized administration to enter in to the contribution agreement. Under the investing in Canada infrastructure program between the government of Manitoba and the city of Thompson. For the structure of a new aquatic facility. Administration.
So this is the agreement, so when council apply for the funding, under I C I P, it is now as a recipient of it. This is the standardized contract that was finally come back from the the province and the feds. We reviewed it with legal, everything looks like it's in order, nothing's different than any other agreement under I C I P that council sign. And this is a request for administration to sign off on the agreement, move that process forward.
Thanks, first move, somewhere to city manager, this is the exact almost same agreement that we signed for the water and sewer and roads. Just allow this, this is the follow up to that letter you got that we got for grant. It's still ultimately going to be mayor council decision if they want to report the project once you get the tender amounts in. So this is just to be prepared if we do that without funding in place, so I'll be supporting you. Thanks.
Thank you, council. Councillor McMyrdle.
Yes, thanks for that, mayor. Uh, just one question for administrations, essentially, a vote against this. Tells the province and the fed that they can keep their eleven million dollars for.
Well, that's correct.
Right, so with that being said, I'm one hundred percent for it. I had a talk to everybody in Thompson, but everybody who spoke to me says, get that pool built. So I'm a hundred percent in support of this, the one thing it would have been preferable for me to have with the town hall that we had outlined and stated we would. But based on the timing of the announcements, the the I C I P grant approval. And then setting for council about the ballot budget. It 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 just didn't work out the timing and of the elective officials, I believe. They the best thing they thought, but the information they asked for, I'm in support.
Thank you, I'll definitely be in support of this. So let me know what's we're hoping, Bill, and the aquatic center designs are ninety nine percent complete. With the signing is disagreeing. On set site, you could see that that one, hopefully you've signed it. It doesn't just, it's a letter, but they don't have to follow. Anyway, so looking forward to this, I mean, if you sign this one, put it in the vault and. Really excited about going forward with the funding, I use this funding secure, funding valid. And hopefully our our committee can can get some funding with the help of so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Wong.
Thank you, madam mayor. I have a clarification for this agreement. Uh, I tried to read that, I couldn't find that, maybe there is the language there. So. Let's say we accept the grant today, tonight. And down the road, because election coming in two months. Or yeah, two months. What if the next term, the mayor and council decide not to take this project, which is because we still short a lot of money. To get this pool built. So for us to able to fulfill this, we need to debenture. I would say at least ten million. Probably more, I don't know. So what if the next term decide to not build? Is any consequences?
Essentially, the council decides that they're not going to build, then the money would be returned to the province. The money doesn't actually even send it ahead of time. We do have the provincial contribution along this one. But it basically, there have been other projects from I C I P that have been awarded to the communities. They've decided they can't do it, the money just goes back to the province.
So that means there's no actually heavy penalty for not not taking it.
If council were to sign this and start spending parts of it and then decide not to finish the project. Council might have to return the parts of the money that were spent. Thanks for the donation, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, madam mayor, I think some of my questions just clarified through the answers to council long. Basically, my understanding is we're we're signing this agreement that at the end of the day. When project is brought back to us in its entirety, that will be when we would actually make that decision. Whether we want to bill or not. I I don't think we should be saying no to eleven million, even if we decide not to bill, no, no loss. Uh, basically, it would be no loss for the various dollars, we just return it. So I think it's it's just a matter of saying yes. I do concur with councillor Wong, I mean, it's it's not fifteen million dollars. I hope the public understands that tonight, it's fifteen million dollar agreement between three parties is what we're talking about. Not just the 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 total bill for this project. I think that's a debate for another night, where we're going to move forward on that. Once we have a tender that is put in front of us so that we can decide. And just one separate request, I know it makes me part of this, make sure there's a basement in the swimming pool that we don't have to. Put money for later on, because that's a concern for me when someone does that. And we already have spent. Quite a bit of money for the engineering design, but if I understand, we spend that on our own, that has nothing to do with this fifteen million dollars, thank you.
That is correct, council, that was a separate fund that council to get their payable expenses.
Thank you, any council.
Thank you, madam mayor, it's likely this to be my last opportunity to public comments on the pool as a member of council. I'll be as brief as I can, but I'm really happy to see the contribution. I'm I'm. I feel a little deflated that the uh, given the amount of time that's passed as well as the amount of inflation that's occurred in that time. That the challenges that are facing city of Thompson are much higher than many of us expected. I hope that we do have a pool here, and there have been some comments about. A public town hall to discuss this and bring the community. In with us so that we can discuss. I feel like this election will be the best opportunity to have that discussion and and people campaign on it at that time. I couldn't have thought of a better time. I do have a question if administration would allow it, given it's a little bit of a stray from the I C I P grant fund base. But we've been at ninety nine percent completion on engineering now for the months.
No, no, when whenever we got ninety nine percent. Ninety nine were delivered to us about three weeks ago, I believe, to our administrative team. Two and a half to three weeks to go through the specs. The specifications are about six hundred and ninety pages, here or take. And then the drawings were another package, probably about fifty pages of detailed drawings. Prior to that, we received sixty six percent drawings. If I can follow up quickly, I just would like to know whether or not the public is going to be able to see. An estimate and final drawings before we go into an election. So as part of the package, they are to prepare us with class A estimates that explain how they cost everything else. So as the drawings are to their final stages and all the components are there properly. They can then send it to an estimator, will give you an estimate of what it would cost to build it, when it day versus building in Thompson. They'll talk about inflation, they'll talk about northern cost differences, all that. They're normally report and the methodology of how they come up that price. And then the true price comes when it goes to tender, and you'll see what the market is willing to build it for. At that point, council could decide if they want to actually build it or to say no, they don't want to.
Just final comments on this again, thank you to all of you who obviously make this happen, it's really good. I'm wondering, I really do hope all of that is done before election, it doesn't sound like it to me. But I wish you all luck, as you. Continue to fight on Thompson's behalf for employees and.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing now, I myself, I do think that signing this for eleven million dollars, as we say. We need to definitely get this money locked in so that it can definitely be available to us down the line. So I definitely will be. So call for the question, all those in favor? Six point four is a resolution to approve the land sale and development agreement for twenty. Resolution two zero two two one six zero, moved by councillor Wong, seconded by councillor Colver. Whereas on March fourteenth, twenty twenty two, council passed resolution number two zero two two zero four two. Approving the auction purchase lot thirty block one six plan seven seven P L T O North Division from. Need a building supplies corporation. Whereas the city is in receipt of the sale of land and development agreement for meter building surprise corporation. For lot thirty block one oh nine plan seven 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 P L T O North Division. Now therefore be it resolved that council approved the sale of land development agreement between meter building supplies corporation. And the city of Thompson for lot thirty block one six plan seven 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 P L T O. Administration.
Yes, I mean, I said this came through council's motion back in March. The developer is is often one two properties and ninety nine Gilbert. They're prepared to go yet, one ninety nine, they're still developing the plan. The agreement, which is attached, has a full site plan, we have the house, it's basically a detached residential house. All of the drawings, documents have been reviewed by the building inspectors, no concerns there. We've gone back and forth with our local council on agreement again, everything has been resolved there. So right now, bringing in front of council for the resolution.
And I believe the proponent indicated that they want to break ground within weeks.
They want to break it down, yeah, yeah, soon.
Thank you, councillor Wong.
Thank you, madam mayor. I was one of the person that really want to push this land to be sold. Because I think the less sitting there, it's not making money for the city. And again, I like to know, I like, and I'm very happy that this land is a soul. And today will be, well, my actually sold and to be approved tonight, right? Okay. I'm very happy about the company that bought it, I believe is subsidiary of N C N, if I'm right.
That's correct, meter building supplies is owned by a mission, N C N's development corporation. It's a branch of their.
I I like to address this, this is another so-called reconciliation part of it, so we are doing that. And also, I have no concern about this at all because of the space. It's enough to do what they want to build. And with that, I will say, go for it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, madam mayor, and I'm not unlike council long, I'm happy to see this piece of land being sold for a couple reasons. First of all, we want to pay to clean up the weeds on that lot, we've been listening to the last few years. From the next door neighbors and certainly again, it adds to the tax base. And with economic development that listens to the tax burden on the rest of the you've got for me to talk, so I will support this one.
I do agree, it's nice to see a property that's been vacant for so many years. Feeling in that in that area, so congratulations and. Moving forward with this land and possibly other land, that I'll call for the question, all those in favor? Six point five is a resolution to approve the keynote speaker sponsorship for Sub Zero. Resolution two zero two two one six one, moved by councillor Ellsworth, seconded by councillor Wong. Whereas council reviewed or requests for sponsorship for the twenty twenty two ready set test, the conference by Sub Zero North. And whereas cold weather testing industry contributes greatly to the local economy and stability of our community. And is a focus area of the city's new community development corporation. Now therefore be it resolved that the city manager be authorized to purchase keynote speaker sponsoring in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. For this conference, administration.
And so as noted, this is a request that could come to council regarding sponsorship of this conference. With respect to economic development, which while they're testing, was viewed at the committee of all council. Council debated this in the committee of the whole and recommended for that the keynote speaker sponsorship. Selected by council, so really now just a resolution so that I can pay for that sponsorship.
Thank you.
Thank you, madam mayor, this again, in my opinion, is a good news story as the last president of the Thompson Community Development Committee. We worked long and hard, things was due, we went with our testing, trying to diversify our economy. And seeing the city stepping up to the plate to sponsor this event, I think will show others that we work together to make Thompson viable. And personally diversified, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bell.
Thanks, Mary Smith, I'm going to be supporting this tonight, I will support council that moved it from committee of the whole to tonight. Uh, my one request would be if the keynote speaker could also wear half of the north city of Thompson hoodie during the speech. Instead of the how it said yes to make recognition and vote us, so I thought that might go along and also. Thank you, always supporting.
I'm also going to request that he also will.
Okay, councillor Wong.
Thank you, madam, I did ask for this question, I don't know whether the administration have a time to question or not. Because of the guest pass, I think it's, I think they only allow three of this package, right?
As part of this, there's three, I can have a separate discussion. Um, this is how it's been marketed out, I have to have a separate discussion with them on if that's possible.
Okay, that will be, that will be allowed to have more than three, that way, because we, is in Thompson, we should be able to able to attend this.
Yeah, those are discussions I have.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I believe myself and councillor Ellsworth are both on that.
Thank you.
I've been sitting in this chair now almost four years. And I've seen lots of community organizations come to this council. And that's my own agents. And we refuse them all. We refuse them all, because we don't have that. And now all of a sudden, this, we have this one here. Because it supports something that city is pushing. Now they want us to advertise for it too. I will not be voting for this, thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, another comment. If your business is needing to get more eyes, more. People, and make no mistake, you operate in this topic somewhat like a business. I understand that you go on. You operate in this probably somewhat like a business. I understand that you don't always make money. Uh but in this case, in order to attract people here, I've seen it, we've all seen issues that we have. In terms of getting people here to work jobs, we need to get these positive messages out there. This is just one way. I see this as an investment. Uh sorry, council, and I don't need to necessarily bang heads with you there, but I just look at it a different way. And I'm certain that when you run your hotel business, like we, you needed to advertise on application to when you started out.
Seeing that, I also see it as an investment opportunity. Uh cold weather testing is definitely very gaining ground here. It's been here since the eighties. It had a quite a good run here in the nineties and that, and it's nice to see that it's being rejuvenated. And that other, you know, it was sort of some of our lack of initiative and and moving forward. That it was went to some of the other provinces in the north. So it's nice to see it coming back to Thompson, Manitoba. So thank you. I'll definitely be supporting. So all those in favor? Opposed? Carried?